Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of Burlington City Council. Today is April 16, 2019. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices. Let us take a moment to reflect. We are thankful for this day that has been given to us, for its opportunities and its challenges. We ask for strength, insight, wisdom, and guidance as we forge ahead, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Amen. This time we recognize our interim city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask that there be potential conflicts in tonight's agenda.
Done. Before council is the agenda, do I hear a motion to approve that agenda?
It's removed.
How second is that?
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, agenda has been approved. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to reject all bids on March 12, 2019, for this 2019 Streets Resurfacing Contract. Item B, approve a lease agreement between the City of Burlington and PNC Equipment Finance LLC, and adopt a resolution of incumbency for lease number 1163180-3. Item C, to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale of surplus equipment consisting of one freightliner truck with sewer jet vacuum by. Item D, to approve budget amendment 2019-36 to allow the Public Works Department to purchase Geotab software and a snowplow attachment utilizing insurance proceeds. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda?
Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, consent agenda has been approved. We have one public hearing scheduled for this evening. Item one, a public hearing has been set to receive citizen comments on the 2019-2020 Draft Annual Action Plan of the Community Development Program. This time we recognize Community Development Administrator, Sonya Brenner.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. At the April 2nd City Council meeting, council set a date for public hearing to receive citizen comments on the draft for our 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan. Our 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan will be on display in our, in the Planning and Community Development Department, starting on April 18. And that comment period will run from April 18 all the way up until May 20. And what was provided in your walls packets were the program budget summaries and also the executive summary from the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan. Excuse me. So tonight, again, we will receive citizen comments on the annual action plan project summaries. Here we do have a map of the proposed projects. So we do have internally, North Park Library, North Park Phase 2B, Maple Avenue Corridor Versade Program. And then externally, we do have a number of nonprofits across the city, such as the Exchange Family Club Center, the Youth Center at City Gate Church, Burlington Development Corporation, Serenity Home Program, which is a program from allied churches. We also have the Creative Directions Workforce Development Program, Ralph Scott Life Services, as well as Residential Treatment Services. I do want to note that on this map, the amounts that you do see under, under here were from our previous estimated numbers. So late Friday afternoon at about four o'clock, I received an email that HUD had actually released all of the municipalities, all of our allocation amounts. And so our allocation amount for this year is $465,000, I'm sorry, $465,963. And so these numbers that are on the map are, again, were our estimates that we use that were based on a previous fiscal year. I have since updated these numbers, which is kind of what put us behind in actually releasing, not releasing to the public, but actually advertising the budget as we do every year in the Burlington Times News. So we do actually advertise the projected revenue and the projected expenditures for CDBG and actually for our home city funds that we receive and our home county funds that we receive. So I don't have the actual amount for our home allocation amounts yet. So that amount goes to the City of Greensboro and then HUD actually tells them how to break those numbers down in terms of what the city and what the county receives in terms of rehab dollars and administration and for CHODO funds or community housing development organization funds. So we will find out what those allocation amounts will be probably in the next two to three weeks. So I do have this spreadsheet here. I think you all probably received this at the last minute, probably today. And as you can note, so I do have the project names here on the side. And then this column here in column B are the amounts that each of the nonprofits requested. And then what was on the map are the numbers based off of the previous fiscal year amount, which was our projected provision allocation amount. And then in column D, we have the updated numbers based on what HUD said that we actually will receive. And so you do see that we did actually received approximately $67,000 more than what we had expected. So we were able to give the nonprofits more than what we kind of wanted to. We, you know, we weren't able to fully fund all of them. So my job would be to go on a hunt to try to find more money for them. So if you do have any questions about how the budget has been revised, I will take questions. We do also have a number of the nonprofits here, excuse me, to speak on their behalf and talk about their needs and how their program will meet Burlington resident needs and to actually also just describe the program that they submitted a request for. And I think that Burlington Development Corporation, the executive director from there, Veronica Rebels, would like to speak first, but first I will again allow the mayor to open up the public hearing.
Any questions in council before we begin the public hearing?
I have a comment. I don't know if this got back to you, Sonya. I mentioned yesterday some of the staff that when I am in the community, a lot of what I hear is about affordable housing and the lack thereof. And it seems to me that we're pretty much in a crisis state in terms of finding affordable housing for people. And one of the opportunities that we have in this community is to think about or look into community land trusts. And there's a group that has been forming around that. I think you may have talked on that as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm wondering whether this would not be an appropriate way for us to fund something, to do a feasibility study in terms of community land trusts. And I don't know whether that fits into the amounts that you have to set aside in each area, but I'd like to propose that as a possibility.
And so, and I do apologize. So I'm supposed to have a remote typed up and I've actually been sick. I have asthma, have had some asthma attacks today. But I had some conversations with Harden and with Nolan earlier today about that. So if you see in our administration line item here, I requested $83,000. And that amount, along with the amount for this fiscal year, is normally, is typically above what we normally do. So a feasibility study is something that would get put into that administration line item. So it is something that, that CDBG or HUD does allow. It is an allowable expense. And so what is boosted up this current year and next year to take in account that we have to do something called a five-year consolidated plan that we have to turn in to HUD. And part of that five-year consolidated plan is something called an analysis of impediments to affordable housing. So there is a required report that we do have to do. So that amount, that $83,000, does take in account that report or the analysis that does have to be done. So in the next two to three weeks, I will be creating an RFP and will be advertising that RFP to try to get consultants to do that analysis of impediments and that five-year consolidated plan. In regards to the land trust, I had just a brief conversation with Nolan Harden about an organization that specializes in particular, and you came to some of the community meetings, one of the community meetings that we had, and we talked about vacant spaces in the neighborhoods. And so there is a organization that specializes in helping communities revitalize that have a lot of vacant spaces, and they do that through land banks and land trust. They are consultants. They will come in and they will, because they know that every state is different in terms of how you do land banking and how you do land trust. Every state is, is something that is state-specific. And so they come in and they work with municipalities to try to get them up to the point where they can do land banking and land trust to try to combat the vacant spaces in neighborhoods. And so I have suggested that organization, and it is called the Center for Community Progress. They have a model that has worked very well, I think in Michigan. They are based out of DC. And to my notch, I believe that they have come to some municipalities here and have started the process of helping the municipalities go through the land banking and land trust process in their municipality. So that is all they do. So, and they do it very well. And so that is an organization that I have suggested that we reach out to. And we should have the funds available between administration funds that are available for us, that are still available to us from this current fiscal year and next fiscal year to use to, to have them to come in and do some consulting on land banking and land trust. And the community that you were talking about that is already trying to do land trust is the Marltown Task Force. So I think they have already partnered with an Elon professor. I'm not sure what her background is in terms of land banking and land trust, but I've only had some brief conversations with their, I don't want to say their leader, but with, her name is escaping me, but the lady that kind of heads up that Marltown Task Force.
Donna.
Yes, Ms. Donna. So, who I thought was going to be here tonight. But, so I've had a brief conversation with her about that and how land trust and things kind of look and how, you know, there's a number of, two ways that she could do that. One that's kind of led through the community organization and one that's kind of led through the city. And so they look kind of different in terms of how you capture or how you gain ownership of the property in the neighborhood. Welcome.
One minor question. Halfway down your sheet, youth center city gate upgrades. Their request is listed as $50,000, but their allocation $55,000. Is there a reason why that allocation exceeds their request?
It is, is because when, so we are actually funding them for upgrades for this current fiscal year as well. And when we went in to view the space, we talked about some of the things that they had requested, because at that point had already had the proposals from organizations. And from the walk-around that we did with our rehab specialists and then with our community development technician, we talked about pricing of some of the things. And the extra $5,000 is because there are some things that they have to do in order to meet code and also because they are changing the use of that area. And so I think they had estimated $50,000, but after those talks, and then I've had another talk with the engineer that is, that they're having to do some engineering plans for, that that $5,000 will probably be needed.
Any other council questions? All right. This is a public hearing, and you said, it's Veronica Rebels.
Yes.
You're hiding back there.
Hi, hi.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am Veronica Rebels, the executive director of Burlington Housing Authority. And let me say, Sonya, if you find any unused funds, just give them on over to us, okay? In 2006, we were approached, Burlington Housing Authority was approached by HUD and the then LME, to see if we would be interested in taking over the homeless grant that was currently being administered by LME to assist persons and families experiencing homelessness. And this is not my, I don't do weeds part of this, Nikki Ratliff does, so I'm pitch hitting for her. But, so we were approached to see if we would take over administering the grant, utilizing our nonprofit Burlington Development Corporation. So we consented to do that as long as we had match funds in order to do it. And at that time, United Way and LME came together and gave us the match funds that we needed. So we'd administered this grant back, starting in 2008, as long as those funds were available for the match. When those funds were depleted, we were seeking another source to meet the match requirement of HUD's grant, and we dipped into some of our nonprofit, non-federal dollars for a little while before we started reaching out to the city to see if we could utilize some CDBG funds. Since the inception, we created two homeless programs under our nonprofit called Hope and Steps. Hope is a program for chronically homeless individuals. And those persons can, once they're in the program, can stay permanently, forever, as long as they want to. The second program we call Steps is a transitional program, and those persons can stay, for families, and they can stay up to 24 months. Since the inception, we have served 17 chronically homeless individuals. And that may not sound like a lot, but those persons, the criteria is very stringent. So there's not a lot of folk that fall under that criteria. And we've served 20 homeless families that have health and substance abuse issues. I'm sorry, that was the chronically homeless. The 20 homeless families are, we helped them with securing housing, employment, and other needs for the families. So the dollars that you provide to us are used to provide case management to these participants, to assist them in identifying their needs, developing a plan, and connecting them to resources to help them achieve their greater determination. Individuals housed are housed in the private market and are visited weekly by our case manager, and we address and obtain updates on their housing stability plan. There are four homeless programs in Alamance County, and we administer two of those four. We partner with allied churches who administers a HUD mandated coordinated entry process for the five county region, which is Person, Rocketham, Alamance, Caswell, and Chatham. And usually persons from those counties are referred to our slots that we have available. Most times, they don't want to relocate to this area. So if we don't fill slots, it's because we haven't received the referrals. But we are administering the program, and we can't do it without your support. So we support.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room wants to speak.
Welcome. I'm John Graves. Creative Directions is fairly new to this particular group, but we've been in existence since 2004. Our primary startup was to help youth, troubled youth. And we found that we couldn't assist the youth, their families, and basically working with their environment. We've had quite a few success stories as far as helping people maintain housing, feeding folk. Even tonight, someone called me concerning a suicide. And so I'm contemplating suicide, and so I did refer him to the emergency room. We do a number of things, but our goal here is to help people meet their needs as far as their total needs, housing, food, jobs, and even business startup. But what we apply for this grant for is workforce development. We feel that if we can help people develop those workforce skills and be able to hold on to a job, then that would actually change their lives and they will be able to get those things that they need, such as housing. Of course, we're going to do referrals as well. But we're partnering with Alamance Community College in doing so. And basically, like, our focus basically is ex-offenders, but we will help others as well in this particular area. And we feel that with this program going in our building, which is on 427 Maple Avenue, help increase, you know, help with employment in the area, and not only that, but crime reduction and recidivism reduction as well. And we definitely want to link out to a lot of ex-offenders. And even, I've talked to the sheriff about providing some of his training in the jail as well before people are released. And so we're working on getting that going as well. But we do have a computer lab in our office where we do utilize that to do quite a few things there. And like I said, Alamance Community College is providing instructors for this program. And basically, your funding will go towards assisting with utilities and partial staff funding.
Thank you, Mr. Graves.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side of the room who wants to speak?
Welcome. Hello. To Mayor, City Council members, pardon, how you doing? I'm Jay Baker, the executive director of Allied Churches. We've come a long way. And it has been a lot of communication and meetings with city council members here that have kind of steered us in the right direction. Serenity Home is kind of new to me. It was an idea that brought from Memphis, Tennessee. It's called Community Integrated Living. It's where we have an individual home, and again, you want homes that are sized because we're trying to house as many families as we can. Where the shelter has a 90-day time limit. What do you do with an individual family that's working to continue their goals, to continue to become self-sufficient at day 90? Where do they go? So Serenity Home is a natural springboard for that. Individuals who have been in the shelter, followed the plan, met certain criteria, have seen that they are striving, everything seems to be on track. But what may be missing is kind of what we talked about, Mayor Proton. Where is that affordable housing? And how do we get them there? What we decided to do was invest in Serenity Home and the program where we take individuals from the family dorm, in the shelter, and move them to the Community Integrated Living. That home is able to house five families or up to 17 people. What we doing there is, there's a lot of structure, there's a lot of guidance. We initially started out with staffing that home. That home is not staffed. This will be our year event. They were actually having a grand opening on tomorrow. Proud to say that there has been no calls for police, there's been no property destruction, no fights, no quarrels, well, probably some quarrels, we just don't know about. But again, it's about structure. It's about resiliency. It's about moving people forward. The longer that an individual stays inside the shelter, you kind of lend them to see things that may not keep motivating them to move forward. Everybody's motivation is different. My background's in corrections, and for every year that the individual is in corrections, they said that we set them back three years of regular normal living. The shelter doesn't have that great of a movement, but I think in about three to four months, that could set you back six to seven months, because you pick up habits that may not be progressive for you to be stably housed. So those funds will go toward the program itself, how we manage them, how we do budgeting, how we move them toward affordable housing. Veronica? One of the great things is that gives us time to get through some of the wait lists and some of the paperwork that we need to do to get them in affordable housing. And we'll talk about affordable housing all year, but it's really about how can we get an individual housed that's going to be safe and affordable for them to stay. And sometimes that is public housing, or that is waiting on subsidized housing, depending on what their jobs are. So again, this is Allied Churches. We appreciate the partnership. We appreciate everything you do. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Anyone else on this side of the room? Welcome.
Hello. I'm Ross Horn, executive director of Residential Treatment Services. And I'd like to just first state that thank you for all the support that you all have given us in the past and the help that you have helped us. Community grant, community development grant funds have helped Residential Treatment Services over the years in many, many different ways. This particular money that we're asking for is to help pay for a case manager's position at our Meven Street House. Our Meven Street House is a home that we operate for homeless women in need of a recovery program. The women that come to us typically, when they come in our doors, they do not have a job, they've burnt all their bridges, they don't have hardly any family contact or anything. And this is a long-term program for them, where they can come in, they come to us, they have the services of case manager to be able to help them get different services that they need across the community and help them get into the workforce. Once they get into the workforce, they pay 30% of their pay. If they make $100 that week, they pay $30. If they make $1,000, they pay $300 that week. I don't want to have anybody that's made $1,000 a week, though. But they, they pay a portion of that. The people that have come through that program, I mean, it is amazing, the success that we have had. And the secret of that is long-term. NADA, few results from NADA, when you read those, it tells you that when you work with people long-term, that's where you have, you know, the best success. I've been in this business now for going on 42 years. And I remember back 42 years ago, the, you know, the secret of substance abuse treatment was 28-day treatment program. You know, that doesn't touch those kinds of things of people that have been homeless and living out on the streets for 30, 40 years. So we're working with those people, getting those involved and getting them out. We have three graduates of that program that work in the substance abuse field now, that have graduated and working in the field and helping other people. And those monies that you help, that we receive from the city, help pay for a case manager that works with those women in that house, and we thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Anyone else on this side of the room?
Good, thank you. Good evening. I'm Susannah Goldman, the interim director of the Alamance County Public Library Systems. So your, the Community Development Program supports the services, provides the library services for Eastern Burlington, for the community, through the purchase of materials such as books, audiovisual materials, periodicals, and electronic resources for the North Park Library users. During the previous fiscal year, the North Park Library circulated a total of 5,490 items. Library visitors to North Park numbered in 5,191 persons through the doors. The library staff were able to provide 117 programs with a total attendance of 1,269 people. Users of our computers, which there were four at the time, consisted of 902 people through that fiscal year. Through your North Park Phase 1 program, you were able to provide a new entrance to the North Park Library inside the Mako Bigelow Center during the summer, so it affected this current fiscal year. Because of that, we've only, it has already had a huge impact on the service being able to provide through the North Park Library. The library visitors during this current fiscal year, which is only nine months as of right now, is already 16,244 compared to the 5,000 from a fiscal year the previous year before. We're very proud of that, that number. We were also able to filter two unused computers from the South Annex Library, which closed due to storm damage, to the North Park Library. So we're now able to offer six computers for the public to use, which means that in those nine months, 1,451 people have been able to use the computers for their job applications and their, their training and research. We have also begun to offer free GED classes in partnership with ACC and additional programming that has shown an increase in our programming totals as well. So as of March, we were able, we've been able to offer 163 programs, resulting in 1,989 attendees. So we thank you for your continued support to be able to offer this and new services to the community.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The computers in terms of, in terms of access for school-aged kids to come in for homework?
Yes.
How effective or can, can they function in that matter with the internet opportunities over there?
We actually get a lot of students that come out there. We have, for the past three years, had a program that's called our ACPL Connect Program. So if any students in the county are an ABSs school student, or they attend, I believe it's Hubbard School, the Burlington School, and a new addition of the Clover Garden School, they can use their student number to access computer, the internet, to access the computers at the library. So they don't need to go through the process of having their parents get them a library card, and they can get on the computers when they're there after school, when they walk from the neighborhood, when the school bus drops them off. And they're in there a lot utilizing that service.
So they know, those parents know that.
So they know, those parents know that. I mean, obviously, that's one of our biggest concerns for those kids who don't have the opportunity at their homes to be able to compete.
Right. I will say that a lot of the regulars, they all know, it is a struggle to get the word out there. We partner with the school teachers and the school media coordinators to help spread the word. But we have learned that the best way to spread the word is through the students themselves. When they come in and use it, they'll tell all the rest of their classmates at school that you can check out items, and you can get on the computers, and all you need is your, you know, they call it their student lunch number. And so they, we see a lot of increased use through that. But we're always trying to spread the word on that program.
And what's your hours, ma'am, in terms of operational hours?
At the North Park Library specifically, it is open Monday through Thursday from 12 until 8:00. They are closed from 3 to 4 o'clock because we are staffed by one full-time staff person, so they have to take a lunch break. So it's basically 12 to 3:00 and then 4 to 8:00, Monday through Thursday.
So no weekend hours?
Not at the moment. Part of this past year's program increase is they've been attempting to offer special hours or special programs on weekends. So there's one Saturday probably every month or every other month where they'll open, and they'll offer a special program in partnership with the community center. And they've been doing that. But regular Friday and weekend hours have been a struggle with the staff we have right now. I can say that I have, we do have requests to get additional staff to the North Park Library, but of course, that is a request that goes through the Alamance County government. We are working to try to get them additional staff to be able to expand the hours.
How can we get a view of that?
Right now, there's a request in with Alamance County in our budget, the county government's budget. I'm not sure if it'll get approved or not this year. Any support, you can pass their way to let them keep that in the budget this year would be much appreciated. If it doesn't get approved, that's not, that doesn't say that we're not going to keep trying to get that position through other, through other means. But we'll do what we can to try to at least get another part-timer so that we can add some services and hours.
Just going to tell you, the library, we have the North Park Library right now, it's excellent. She's very hardworking, very dedicated, does a lot of stuff that we're very appreciative of out there.
Some of the displays you've done are fascinating.
Yes.
Really, really good extra stuff in the hallways and...
Yes. That is, our staff over there, her name is Alexis Vivian, that works full-time at the library. And she works very hard to have that, she's added in the hallway, that doesn't get used now because it's no longer the entrance to the library. It's sort of like a museum display hallway that she curates partnerships with Elon to get stuff in there, and they've been pretty fabulous.
Anyone else?
Go, we like to have room.
Anyone else from this side of the room? Anyone from this side of the room?
Hi, I'm Lisa Edwards from the City Gate Dream Center. And we want to thank you for your support. Over the last year, we've seen 350 middle school and high school kids come to our Wednesday night program. And about two weeks ago, we decided to go to two programs. So we now have a middle school program going on right now on Tuesday nights and a high school program on Wednesday. We're averaging about 100 kids right before we decided to go to two nights, and so it's been a pretty incredible opportunity for us. We partner also with the Burlington Police Department and have officers there building relationships with kids and just being a part of that community. And that's been a really incredible thing, too. We haven't passed out flyers or put up signs. Kids have brought kids, and so it's been pretty amazing to see that happen. Kids ride up on their bikes, or they bring their friends. Sometimes we provide transportation for quite a few kids. Some kids that walk there, we end up taking home and are so surprised with how far they'll walk to get there. And that's really without us even having all the sports facilities finished in there right now. To them, it's a gym, but it's more of a warehouse. So we're on the, on the way to do that. One of the other things, I know at the beginning of this year with our students, I asked them something they wanted to grow in, something new they wanted to do this year, and something they wanted not to do anymore. And one of the students came to me, and he gave me his paper, and he said, "I want to stay out of trouble, and I want to come here more." And I said, "Buddy, we're going to have something here every day eventually." So we're grateful for everything that we have an opportunity to do. We also have free sports and dance classes, art classes, piano classes, all kinds of things. And that's what that funding that we receive from you is used for. Our Wednesday night program, just for one more thing that I wanted to say, we start out with them, and it's called Spin. And then we say that we want to be supportive, positive, inclusive, and it's a new day when you come. It's tough sometimes when you carry your pass with you or your baggage from home, and we want them to know they have a new opportunity. And we utilize some of our high school student leaders in getting their input in what we wanted to do and stepping out to do two nights. And so now our high school night is called RES, and that's short for resilient, resourceful, respectful, and responsible. And we hope that if we can see those young people from Cummings and Broadview grow in those areas, that we know that there's something incredible ahead for them. The awesome thing, too, is that we have now a chance for some of our high school leaders to come and mentor those middle school students. So that's been really just a blessing to get to see. So we're offering all those kinds of classes. We're also partnering with ACC. They do RESEL classes, also computer classes, and we'll be adding more classes with them. Crossroads, Elon, Cone Health, Guardian Edelweiss, Alamance Citizens for Drug-Free Community, LUPA, Plaza Connetaria, Latinos of Alamance, Burlington PD, and Alamance Partnership for Children. So we've seen about 200 weekly and about an average of 400 for the week, 450 monthly. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else on this side?
Greetings, Mayor. Thank you. And Council. My name is Lisa McBroom, and I'm one of the program managers at the Exchange Club Family Center in Alamance. And I actually facilitate one of our children's parents' classes, which is very near and dear to my heart. Because sadly, and as you'll notice, I am wearing the blue ribbon, which this month does recognize child abuse and neglect. And sadly, that is a problem that we have here in Alamance County. And often from that, if you'll notice, in downtown Graham, there are pinwheels around the Court Square. And those symbolize children that have been affected, and most of those have lost their life due to child abuse and neglect. So what our agency has taken on for several years, I've been with the agency for 13 years now, is educating our parents. And what my parents know, and they probably get tired of me saying that, is we are their first teachers. And that's, they repeat it. And I'm like, "If you don't remember anything else that I say, remember that we are their first teachers." The way it's set up, it allows them an opportunity to interact with other parents and realize that it's not just them, that we're all learning throughout the process. So it allows them an opportunity to share, to discuss their own personal situations that are going on with their home. And I've noticed over the years, what has changed are the dynamics of things because we're seeing grandparents that are attending these trainings. We're seeing young moms attending the trainings. We're seeing couples, which is also good because we want them to be on the same page and realize the importance of their roles. And that is what the funding is helping with. We try to meet parents where they are, and that's the placement. And May Memorial has been phenomenal in working with us in contributing funding as it pertains to their graduation. It is a 12-week class. And it allows parents to, we discuss basic skills, the basic parenting skills. We talk about development because oftentimes what they don't realize is that sometimes we have to go back in our own childhood and realize that there are things there that may have been traumatic that affect us as adults, which pour into how we raise our children or how we were raised. So this allows us an opportunity to touch into that, to tap into it. And we're appreciative of the funds. And when I have parents that walk away and they're sharing with me, in fact, most recently, I had a mother that had missed a class, and so I called her, just to let her know the next class was coming up, and we missed her. And she responded back, and she said, "Lisa," she said, "I wanted to share with you why I wasn't there." She said, "My sister was killed in a car accident and left behind four children." And she said, "In that time, our family had to rally around her in order to help her in getting through that. And it was because of the class and things that I had learned from the class that helped me in even dealing, going through this process with these children." So it's things like that and having the opportunity, and I'm just one, I love, the more we know, when we know better, we do better. And that's what I tell our parents. And I love being in that position to plant those seeds and to watch them grow over the course of the weeks. And they do have homework. So they have to take that information, and they have to instill it and work on it. And I expect that homework back whenever they come back. And, but just to see and to hear a mom actually share that, that she had an opportunity to apply that and made it applicable within her own, I'm sad that it was for that particular reason. But we speak to those type things when life hits you and how to go about maneuvering it and working through that in a healthy environment. So again, I thank you for those opportunities and just ask that funding, that when you think about that, and you're at the roundtable thinking about the seeds that we're planting in these parents to continue that growth and development within the children in order to bring about a safe community, and it starts at home. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne.
Lisa, what's the name of your organization?
It's the Exchange Club Family Center in Alamance. We're located in Graham, and we do hold three classes throughout our fiscal year. Our last one was in August. We had one in January, and we actually have one upcoming next week, and they are 12-week sessions.
About 36 weeks.
Yes. And they're hour and a half on Thursday. They vary depending upon the availability. But typically, right now, they're on Thursdays for an hour and a half at May Memorial Library. And they've been awesome as far as partnering with us and helping.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side of the room? Welcome.
Mayor, Council members, my name is Jennifer Hilton. I'm the President/CEO of Ralph Scott Life Services. We provide residential and day services for adults with developmental and other intellectual disabilities. We've been a part of this community since 1971. I've been there for 20 years, and I've been the President/CEO for the past eight years this coming July. And as my time there and my time before CEO, we have been able to use a lot of grant funds to provide improvements to our day program, to our group homes, so that we can provide safe housing for these adults, we can provide a safe day program for them. In particular, this year, we're requesting some funds to renovate a kitchen at one of our group homes. It's the group home located on Broad Street. We support six adult men there. And originally, the house was purchased from the city of Burlington in 1978. It was renovated with community block grant funds, and our kitchen is in desperate need of renovations. I think the Sanitation Department would agree with that, and some of our surveyors and reviewers that, you know, we constantly receive recommendations to update that. And it's a significant amount of money in our budget. You know, we have a large budget, but most of that money goes directly to services. And so anything that we can do to help improve their safety and their home, and we have the opportunity to do that, we try to seek those opportunities out. So as you look at this and discuss it, we'd just like you to keep in mind what the money's going to be used for and the services that we provide, and that we appreciate anything that you can do to help us with that. Have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else on this side of the room?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council members, for inviting me to be here. My name is Kep Taylor, representing the Construction Training Partnership. It's a tri-party with the city of Burlington. Our partner in Raleigh is NC Housing Finance Agency, and I'm with the home builders. We do some job training for HUD-eligible clients in this area, and the agency matches the cost of training dollar for dollar. And I think they're coming up for a visit. And thank you, Ms. Randolph, for keeping us straight with HUD and helping with the agency to keep this. But we appreciate the funding. We do the construction training. The Housing Finance Agency, their mission is all about affordable housing. We take our students and try to give back to the community during the process. And be happy to entertain any questions. I think we were on the agency agenda last week, and I think that went well.
Thank you.
As moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion from Council to close public hearing?
Someone.
All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Any final questions or comments from Council? We appreciate everyone for coming and speaking tonight and for all the work that you do in our community every day. So I need to thank you. That concludes our agenda this evening. We have one public comment. At this time, I'll call on Vicki Vernon.
I hope I don't blow you away. I'm a teacher, and I have a tendency to project, so is this okay?
Yeah.
We are a neighborhood, I'm Vicki Vernon, I live at 903 West Davis Street, and I am part of the historic district. And we are a neighborhood of walkers, runners, bike riders, and stroller pushers. I see my first runners about 6:00 in the morning when I go out to get the paper. It's followed by a stream of walkers that come along. The last walker is usually a young mother with a baby in a stroller about dusk. We are full of walkers. I don't spend my time outside watching my neighbors, I really don't. But when I go out to get the paper, when I go to work, when I come home, walk the dogs, and my dog also thinks that everyone that passes is a serial killer. So she barks a lot. So anyway, I'm pretty aware of what goes on in the neighborhood. There are only a few streets that feed and lead to the future arboretum. And they have full sidewalks, very few of them. One of those streets is West Davis Street. Edgewood Avenue is a logical choice to take to walk to the arboretum, but the sidewalk ends at Central. And it does not connect to West Davis. And so in effect, it is a dead end. The only sidewalk connection from Edgewood to West Davis is West Willbrook. Because of plantings, signs, and power poles, there is no safe place to walk from Davis Street to Edgewood or Edgewood to West Davis. Many choose to walk on Edgewood as the hill on Davis is fairly steep. And most walkers and bike riders, and especially those with young children on bikes, prefer Edgewood because the slope is gentle. The only pedestrian bridge across the park is at the foot of Ingle Street, and there is no complete sidewalk on Ingle Street. The sidewalk ends about 2/3 of the way up Ingle and does not connect to Central. Central connects to West Davis, but there is no sidewalk. There is curb and gutter already in place in most of the areas that lack sidewalks. To connect to West Davis from Ingle, from Edgewood or Ingle, somebody has to walk in the street. You have to have your kid in the street, your dogs in the street, your bike in the street, the whole nine yards. Edgewood and West Davis are very busy at certain times of day. There is school traffic, there's work traffic, and of course, the normal day-to-day traffic and on Sunday to church, to downtown, to the library, daycare. It's a busy place. There is, as I mentioned before, foot traffic at all times of day. Sidewalks connecting Ingle to Central and Central to West Davis would be a boon to the neighborhood and certainly increase pedestrian safety. Now, I have pictures of all the places that I cited, and I also sent, I think, a letter with some more detail to each of you, too. Do you have any questions? I think I've pretty much covered everything that you could do between the letter and this and all my pictures. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Vicki.
Yeah, I've got a question. Has staff seen this?
I did, I did get a very nice response from Mr. Nunn.
We, we had...
Okay, yes. How are you? It's nice to have a face.
Yes, we did, as soon as we got the information, looked at the area, obviously put our pedestrian plan, looked at that. It's a neighborhood area. There's nothing specifically harmful in this area, but there's some key missing segments identified. Some can find... Yes, we did, as soon as we got the information, looked at the area, obviously, put on our pedestrian plan and looked at that. It's a neighborhood area. There's nothing specifically topical in this area, but there's some key missing segments identified, some in like 200-foot range, some in 300-foot range, that will connect these areas she's talking about. So, the short answer is we could put like an on and following list, but they are key pedestrian connections that we could provide some information back to you on the cost to do that. It would be like a major sidewalk program to make some connections that would create a network.
One of the things that we were looking at, I brought that exact subject up in talking about some budget discussions earlier, is we've got a, we've got a Peds Plan, we've got a pretty aggressive plan to try to get some things done, and obviously, there's some FTA monies tied to some of the things that we're doing as well, which will help on the Peds side with sidewalks, but we, we've got a pretty robust dollar amount associated with some sidewalk improvements that we want to do in this upcoming budget, and some of it's tied to DOT projects. But there's also some areas that we've got city allocated dollars for that could be eligible for CDBG funding to put those sidewalks in. We could reallocate some of those dollars for a project such as this or something. So, I would like to take a look at that, too. If you guys are going to come up with a budget piece of it, it would make sense, and Harold, you know exactly what I'm talking about, because we've done that many times in the past.
Leverage money.
Leverage money.
Yeah.
So, we could, we could take our city budget dollars from an area that the CDBG money could go towards, use that money in place of, in lieu of, and get two, two impacts for a price of one. So, if we could see that, how that would play out, it would really maybe be beneficial to this project or, or others as well.
Yeah, I did mention, I mean, as well, the transit piece, we have the city projects already funded and designed that we built from Warwick, so I think that water on Front. When we had it in place, we'd be able, the bus stop there was not there. This area would be within the eligible funding part.
So, that would be FTA dollars, which is in addition to it. Yeah.
So, there's some adults there that could be with that.
Yes. We said it one more time, Mike, just so everybody's clear, what you...
Once, once the city...
FTA, what that means.
Yeah, FTA, the Federal Transit Association, about this funding to, since we have a transit system, to put pedestrian access to our bus stops. So, we'll be able to, this area, when we do a city sidewalk on Front Street, be able to put a bus stop there that right now has no pedestrian improvements, so we don't want bus stops there.
That's in either direction of the stop. So, it's quarter, quarter mile in either...
This area definitely is just south of there, and we'll make it eligible once we get that bus stopping stop.
Projected far, roughly.
This year. Yes.
This summer.
Summer. Yes, we did just...
Front Street. It's a big connection on Front Street, all the way to Warwick.
Yeah, Warwick's up, which is upstate.
From Central.
Which connects to the existing, there. So, once that's in place, we'd be able to look at eligible all to sell.
Because then, if you get then from down to, on Front, all the way down past the park and up to Warwick, then you would be able to walk into the park. There still aren't sidewalks, but you could, you know, there will be a path, I'm assuming, in the Arboretum all the way through, right?
Correct. Both sides.
Both sides.
And Central is, I wrote that today, it's pretty tricky.
It is tricky, and, and it's an intersection, as you can see, it is a wide intersection, and there is no easy way to cross. There's just not an easy way to do it. If you, if you cross from the, I'm, I'm the, I'm the street, okay. If you cross from the right side, then you have to cross all the way across, and there's no place to walk, as I said, and there's trees and all the other stuff. The other side is heavily planted. We have a new resident, and she has heavily planted it. I've got a picture, lots of irises and daylilies and all the other stuff, so you tiptoe all around through that, and then you have to cross again. So, there's just not a good way.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Vicki.
Any other questions for council regarding?
All right. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment. Do I hear any council comments this evening? Well, it is spring, and spring means it's Easter, so we've got a number of city events coming up for folks looking to get their egg hunts on. First of our egg hunts is on April 19th at 6:00 p.m. It's a glow-in-the-dark egg hunt over at the Fairchild Community Center. If you missed that one, then we've got two egg events, the Easter Egg Hunt at Fairchild on April 20th at 10:00 a.m., and then Easter in City Park, April 20th from 10:00 a.m. until noon. And then, also for your calendars, we have our Maple Avenue Public Meeting. That's the proposed corridor improvements for Maple Avenue. Those will be unveiled to the public for feedback, April 20/30, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Cornell Senior Center. So, anyone around the Maple Avenue corridor involved with that, we encourage you to provide feedback as they continue to polish and wrap up that corridor plan. And then, World Tai Chi and Qi Gong Day is happening on April 27th over at the Village of Brookwood. That is a public event. You're welcome to join me as we practice our Tai Chi at 9:00 a.m. over at Village of Brookwood. And, thank you, Captain. And then, April 27th and 28th, the author of Outlander, Deanna Galloway, will be at the Paramount Theater in Alamance Battleground. So, that's a wonderful partnership at the library and the Recreation Department, and we look forward to hosting her as her books talk about Alamance Battleground and it promoted our community to the world. So, if you can join the author on those tickets. Any other council comments? All right. Do I hear a motion, Judge? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Thank you everyone for coming this evening.